All right, I'd like to call our meeting to order. And at this time, we're going to review our agenda items for Thursday's meeting on October 19th. It will be at Central City Elementary School. And we are, I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Davis to announce our speaker.
Thank you Chairman Rager. Board members, Craig Thomas is here to talk about who we are with the project at Bremen. And he needs to be somewhere afterwards, so we've got a couple of things, but if that's okay, we're going to let Mr. Thomas go ahead and go first.
Well, thank you. Thank you all for giving me the opportunity to be here. I'm going to give each one of you a handout. The top piece of the handout is the program that's written and the two schemes that we've done. And what we're going to do is present to you Scheme B tonight, and then at your next board meeting, we would hope that you all will be able to make approval for the schematic design, so we can forward that to Frankfurt. The second piece on the handout is the actual presentation that I want to go over with you. So as you look at that top piece, you'll see that that is all of the programmatic issues that we talked about. It will go over the ball fields, the lighting, the basketball, the soccer, the concession stand, the sign, and things of that nature. So when you go through here, if you had a question, if you wanted to know what type of field lighting we would be doing, it will tell you that we're going to look at conventional field lighting versus LED lighting and things of that nature. So with that, I'd like to talk to you all a little bit about the Genie Gishgatten and the Harry Gatten Park, what we know as the Bremen Ballpark. First thing I want to show you is the site. I think most of you all know where it's located, but this is the actual building with the front parking lot here. And the site that we're looking at is this piece here. We're also looking to put the basketball court over here in this area there. You've got an existing parking lot there. Two fields fit in this area very nicely. You'll be able to get all your soccer that you're wanting to do there as well. The big issue that you have is you have a geothermal well field system that is running through that field. And so we cannot build a building and we cannot put field lights over that piece. We think we've got it identified, and the next series of drawings I'll show you, I'll be able to show you exactly where we think it is. But that is something that will be very important for us not to build on top of it. It'd be fine to put fence over it and things of that nature, fine to play ball over it, but we don't want to do anything that's going to get into it from a depth perspective. We would think, we would expect that to be four feet below grade. A little bit about the site again. This is the existing building. This is the existing parking lot, and this is the field that I showed you that the two fields could sit on. What we're looking at doing is doing a large field and a small field. The small field would be more tee ball and things of that nature, at a 150-foot fence, whereas the large field, you'd be able to play maybe bay brute up to it. So we're looking at between a 250 and 300-foot fence on that facility. Both fields, we would put lights on. Both fields would have dugouts. We would have a centralized concession stand for both fields, and we would have a nice sign we'll show you a little bit more about here shortly. At the end of the day, we had submitted a different scheme that had actually rotated the smaller field, I think about 90 degrees. Home plate was here with the outfield going in that direction, but when we met with the committee, they wanted to switch it, so that's what we've done, and that's the proposal we're submitting to you is this piece here. I'm going to show you a larger plan of that. Before I do, I also want to point out again, we're looking at putting the basketball court in that corner there up against the building adjacent to the playground area. There are some existing sewer lines and things of that nature that forced us to put it that close to the building. We didn't want to build over those sewer lines, those existing lines. Not sure if everyone can see this, but you've got a lot of site concrete that we're proposing to do, so that when people come off the parking lot, they'll be able to come onto sidewalks and to access the facilities, okay? You'll also see we've got some pieces, it looks like a soccer ball, a softball, and a baseball. We're also, we're thinking about doing stained concrete to create those pieces, since all three of those will be played at this facility. A little more about where items are going. Dugouts be third baseline, first baseline, obviously home plates here, pitching mounds there. The concession building with restrooms will be in this location. We'll have to run the sewer line down this direction and then run it back towards the school to get the sewer to meet up with the existing sewer. And then on the smaller field, home plate, pitcher's mound, third base dugout, home base dugout, and then we've got concrete for seating areas on both of those. Each facility, we're looking at doing portable aluminum bleachers with a seating capacity of about 30 for each bleacher. You'd have two, one on each side of home plate, if you will, and then you would be able to physically move those if you needed to move them from one field or the next, okay? Soccer, just so you know, they would set the soccer up and they'd do the smaller tikes playing soccer in this field and the larger soccer fields here, and they were just going to set those up when the field is completed. They'll mark those out and they'll set the goals themselves, and that's the reason why we're not showing the soccer on here. Any questions?
The geothermal, is that going to the school? Or is that a residence?
The geothermal well field system...
I mean, it's got to be marked. I think you said you've got to have someone out.
You can't really see it, but it comes across right here. There's two dash lines there, and it actually comes all across to this dash line here. For some reason, it's not on here. I'm not sure if my staff took it off. But what it is, that is used for your heating and cooling system.
Yeah, I have one in my home. I'm just wondering who it belongs to. Is it for the school?
For the school.
School, okay. But it still has to be marked?
Yeah.
Great.
So what we don't want to do is put a light base, which is 12 feet down, into where well is.
Sure.
Because once we hit it, now we have to fix it. And we're going to have probably four poles for, four or five poles for this field, and anywhere from three to four for this field. We think that the well field stops here, so we'll be fine with this dugout. We think it comes here, so we're fine with that dugout. We're going to be fine with the concession building. So we think we designed it to meet it. But that's an existing, geothermal well field is for the HVAC system. And what that means to you all as a district is that that is a very efficient way to heat and cool your building, because you're taking and putting energy into the ground and pulling that energy out of the ground to heat and cool your building, which is very cost-effective to do. So we don't want to mess that up. A few more items. This is the, excuse me, proposed concession stand. Couple of things I want to point out. The concession stand is here. It has two restrooms, male and female, and there's a small utility closet or mechanical space for putting the lights for the fields and the power to come into it and water for the concession and restrooms. Also, if you look at this elevation here, which would be, I believe, on this side of the building, we're going to put a plaque that's a tribute to the Gattens, okay? Also, if you look at that plaque, you'll see two little horizontal bands, one below and one above. There are about 30 some odd brick that is inside the existing school or the classroom. We're going to salvage those bricks from the original building. We're going to have the mason install it on that wall. So when you go there, you'll have a little bit of existing building on that wall, then you'll have the plaque that'll sort of maybe give their life story about the meaning to Bremen and their relationship and things of that nature. Outside of that, I want to point out this wall here, which is, this wall is this side here, and you can see we're trying to take some of the language from the existing building where the concession stand is. So when people come up to it, there'll be a little covered arch there that sort of mirrors the arch that you have on the school itself, so. I think the next slide is a blow up of the actual restrooms and the concession stand. We gave the committee three different layouts, and this is a layout they chose of the three. I'm not sure I need to get into the specifics of each piece, but you do have men's restroom this side, ladies restroom, again, mechanical area here, and then the concession stand at that location there. The dugouts, masonry dugout with fence infield, a simple lean-to. We're showing metal roof on both of the structures, and that's something, as we do the cost opinion, which will come to you on DD approval, that may be something we have to look at from a cost standpoint, whether you do a metal standing seam roof to match the existing building, or if you have to downgrade to a 30-year or 50-year asphalt shingle. You can replace the shingles about three or four times while you'll pay for the metal roof. But that would be something that could impact the budget. The dugouts, 30 feet long on the big field, and I think it's 24 feet long on the small field. So two different lengths of the dugouts. Basketball court, basically it's a 42-foot wide, 80 feet long, and we've got, if you looked at that, you would say, well, that's the size of an elementary school gym basketball court. But instead of having one court, we've turned the court sideways, so you're going to have two games going on at one time. And then the final piece is the signage that would identify what the park is, and I apologize, you can't read what the plaque says, but there is a double-sided plaque here in the center. You've got the arched piece above it. We're going to take the brick, the existing brick on the building, we're going to try to reuse that and pull that language off the building again to create the signs. Then we'll have the plaque announcing the name of the park and things of that nature. And with that, I believe, I'd be more than glad to answer any of your questions.
Craig, I know it looks pretty level, but it's always kind of deceptive. Do you have any idea how much dirt work is going to have to be done?
Dirt is, it does fall off quite a bit. There's about three to four foot of gray change across it. Now, we're going to keep some of that gray change, because we want the field to drain. So what will happen is where the pitcher's mound is, is usually the highest part, and we drain everything away from it in all directions. So obviously, center field is going to be the lowest part, and that's where the lowest part is now. We've got associated engineers looking at it right now to look to see how to do the grading, and once he's done for DDs, I'll be able to tell you the quantity of material we think will need to be removed and placed. We will try to waste any and all material on site versus hauling it off unless it's such a large quantity of material that it doesn't make sense to waste on site.
Are there going to be any drains in the fields?
No, sir. Typically, we wouldn't have any drains. We'll have some electricity at the pitcher's mound for the pitching machines and things of that nature, but typically, you don't put subsurface drains in. You could put a sprinkler system in, but I don't believe programmatically that was something that was added during the program.
Well, we put drains in the South Elementary School field because they stay damp.
Right. But we would hope to get the slope and drain right and have it constructed properly, so that wouldn't have to happen. But on our documents, we could add some subsurface drainage, sort of like French drains around the perimeter, if we got any issues that we've identified.
And that would be discovered as you construct it, correct? To add if you needed to?
Well, the civil engineer is going to be looking at the site and draining. He should come to us with a recommendation if we need those or not. But what we can do on top of his recommendation, let's say he says we don't need them, we can still take a unit price for them, and then when we get out there, if we want to put them in, we would know how much it was to put them in, so.
Okay. So how much, what's the total? Did the committee discuss what the total?
We haven't done the final estimate for this scheme. That's something that you do when you do the BG 2 and 3, and you'll do that at your next, at the DDs. But we feel like right now that we're within the proposed budget on the project. We've got Musco Lighting looking at the lights to give us a cost opinion for both the traditional field lighting as well as the LED lights, which is a much more cost-effective light to operate, and it does a better job of lighting your field and controlling your lights. And if you all want to see an LED field, you can go to Hornsboro, to the Hornsboro Middle School football field and soccer field and track that we just completed there. They've got, they're the, either the first or second LED lights in the state of Kentucky for field lighting. They're more expensive, but they're cheaper to operate and they have a longer bulb life. But if you go with the traditional lights, what, how we specify those, you would not have to change lights for 25 years. That would be in the contract for those lights to be changed out automatically.
Craig, is there an estimate on what point your cost savings catches up with what it actually cost you, the difference in the conventional versus the LED?
Well, that's something we've asked Scott Knoll to look at, and he's, I've talked to him this evening, and he is looking at that right now. He's supposed to get with Kurt Mickey, with Musco, and discuss that. Obviously, you really know the, you really never know the answer to that, because you don't know the frequency
Sure.
...of use, and then how long the lights will be on each time you use it. So they make some assumptions, and based on assumptions, they'll be able to come and tell you, is it four years, eight years, 12 years, 20 years, what it is. But we plan on coming at the DD phase to let you all know. Before we come here, we will also have met with the building committee, and they will already know the answer to that as well. So that's something that is in the works to determine.
So what was the proposed budget?
I think it was with the contingent...
Eight ninety-six or something like that.
Something eight something.
It was just under $900,000, if memory serves me correct.
From, for everything?
For the whole piece, yes ma'am.
I can guarantee you the LEDs would be a lot cheaper to operate, a lot cheaper. If I put them in my house, it, there's no comparison what it was before.
That's kind of the way most are going more and more.
The whole state of Indiana, Duke Energy provided light bulbs to each household's businesses, and I think on the whole state is seeing a 46% reduction so far in the first year.
But it is a big reduction. We'll be able to, you know, fill it in Hornsboro. This is their first year playing soccer and football on it. So we're going to have a pretty good idea here. I can probably start pulling their utility bills in the last three months, and I can also have that compared to what they're doing at, they have a standalone soccer field, and they also have a standalone football rast stadium. And I can start to ask them for those bills, so we can see the comparison, real-life comparison between those three facilities. And that's something we're prepared to do with that.
And it's also, if I understand it right, it's also less glare and less bleed over into maybe neighbors
Correct.
...or whatever as well.
Very much so. Yes, sir. And we're able to cut down on the glare and the bleed over with either option. Musco does a really good job eitherwise, either way, but the LED is much easier to control. It's a, it's sort of a brighter light in a way, and it's a whiter light, so.
A lot of parking lots have LED.
Oh, good. The parking...
And it's a little more modern look too, when you look at them. So they're raised when they're up on top of the poles, really look nice, and they do a great job of lighting. And you also do site lighting, what we call pedestrian lighting around the site, also off of those poles, with a lower level of LED as well. You can put speakers on them and things of that nature, so.
Any questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
It's going to look really nice down there.
Thank you all. Appreciate the opportunity, and if you all want me to be here Thursday night, I'd be more than glad to do so. Just whatever you all want, so.
I mean, yeah, I think we're, I mean, it's, I'm, we're going to...
Well, if something happens between now and then, just send me an email. I'll be here. If not, we, we're going to send, after you all prove it, on Thursday, the next morning, I'll plan on downloading it to Frankfurt. Typically, 10 to 15 days, we should get an answer. In the meantime, just so you all know, I'll be meeting with Scott Knoll, who's doing the ME, uh, M, excuse me, doing mechanical electrical plumbing design. We'll be meeting with the structural engineer, Ken with Wilkie Engineers, who will do the footings and foundations and the roof trusses and walls. And we're also meeting with the civil engineer, David Lamb, with Associated Engineers. David was the original site civil engineer, and that's the reason why we used him, because he already had the knowledge of that site. So those meetings, we're going to take place while this is sitting in Frankfurt, so that we can come back to you all, potentially in November, but at the latest in December, for DD approval. So when we come back for DD approval, we'll have the DD approval, we'll have a BG 2, and we'll have a BG 3. And then that will allow us to go into contract documents, and then when we get through contract documents, we'll come back with a revised BG 3 and ask for approval of the contract documents. And the BG 3 is the cost opinion for the project, so.
And maybe get started in the spring, or?
Yeah, that's what we're probably looking at, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Y'all have a great evening.
You as well.
Okay, we're going to go down to approval of the minutes of the prior board meeting. Board members, you've had a chance to look through the prior meeting minutes, and are there any recommendations or changes that are noted? If not, we can go down to the treasures report.
Really the, really the delay that you've seen, basically, we had some training the week prior to last week. We had Amy Smith of Woodford County. She, she's really much the Munis guru. She knows more about Munis than Munis. So, and what we discovered is that we wanted to do a little bit of cleanup, and so they've been in that process, they're actually up through the end of, almost the end of August in that cleanup. And so what I did not want to give, give you all basically numbers that I didn't feel comfortable with. What I did do is I did everything that I could for you this evening. So I mean, the treasure report is, is complete. Sands the ending balance, basically, and that's part of the cleanup. It's not a significant difference, you know? We're not looking at hundreds of thousands of dollars, we're just looking at, you know, a thousand dollars if, if that. But what it is, is as they went through, they saw different payrolls that, that were hitting in ways that they didn't, they didn't see that they, that it was driving as, the way they wanted to. So they're cleaning that up. Actually, I like the way it's being done now, because it balances, it'll be more accurate moving forward. So once that's complete, I will be giving that to you as soon as possible. I'm hoping that should be done tomorrow. But again, you do have, the revenues are, are correct, the expenses are correct, it's just that, that final balance that we're, that we're going through right now.
And this is someone you're working with at, at the state?
No, she's with Woodford County.
Okay, so it's just another finance officer?
She's another finance officer. She's the, she's one that a few of my peers recommended, that said, you know, we, Terry and I were looking through the numbers, and I was asking her questions, and basically it was, it was stuff that we really couldn't, we couldn't figure out. I didn't have a, a strong enough knowledge of Munis to, to feel really, really solid about correcting some of these things, so that's when we, I called my peers. They said, really need to call Amy Smith. And I've worked with Amy before. She's, she's given me spreadsheets that, that I do use, but she sat down with Terry for a full day and has kind of remoted in a couple of times, but fantastic, has broken it down into things that she and I both understand. So I'm very appreciative of her, and she's, she's great. I can't say enough good things about her. But so, in that process, we've just, we've gone back to April, and just, and Terry's just started cleaning, and then, so now we're just moving forward and, and trying to get everything absolutely...
What needs to be cleaned up since April?
It's just, you know, if, it was, they were balancing to the balance sheet, not the trial balance, and I didn't, I didn't realize that, and so that's, that part is my fault. But there may have been like a $30 discrepancy here or there, and so instead of just doing a journal entry to correct it, they're finding where exactly that occurred. And so it's, 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 I mean, it's a good thing, so.
So that's shortly after Terry began in that position.
Basically.
April of this year?
Yes, ma'am. And that's, and that's also when we switched over to Munis 11.2, and things are done differently in 11.2. So Susan was not able to lend instruction to Terry on that, on that portion of that, just because it was a different operating system. And so, you know, we did the best we could moving forward, but then, as we started discovering some of these things, then we said, okay, we need to enlist some, some more help, and so that's what was done. And Mr. Davis allowed us to bring this person, this person in. I'm very grateful for that, and it's a, it's a, it's a positive thing for our district.
Good, thank you.
It's a couple thousand dollars up and down balance.
Yeah, it's not, it's, it's nothing, it's less than a tenth of a percent, I mean, if that.
Are there any further questions on the financial report? And bills and salaries?
What I did, I just got the board bills, able to do that for you. I took them to put it in an Excel spreadsheet, and I just sorted it by the most expensive ones, just so you could prioritize what you're looking at, and if you had questions on any of them, you know, feel free. So I've got those broken down. But I also did, you know, like I normally do, I put the, the checks that I found that were significant, those being the debt service payments. It was a little over $500,000 in debt service payment again. I do, that's most of the significant payments until the end of the year, so we really shouldn't see a, a bunch of large payments coming down the pipe anytime soon. So really, that was, that was the bulk of the, of the board bills this time.
If not, we are on school bills. Anybody ever have questions about school bills?
Nothing to say?
Yes, that's right. Okay, so we'll be down to the superintendent report.
What I'd like to do tonight, and I won't ask her to come back on Thursday, but what I'm trying to do at work sessions is maybe like last week or last month, Jimmy came in, kind of gave some updates, and I like to do a little bit of that each month, something a little different. And I've asked Sherri to come in, if she would, and, and talk about Gifted and Talented a little bit, just give you a bit of an update on that. We don't get to talk about that a lot, so give her a few minutes here and now.
I'll try to make it quick. Thank you, board members, and especially Mr. Davis, who's talked to me more than once in support of Gifted and Talented. And then, of course, Penny Roberts, who's come on to kind of lead us in a good direction and try to get our program together a little better than what we've had in the past, because we've had some changes and some things that we needed to take a look at. But just a quick overview of Gifted and Talented, we have two Gifted and Talented teachers here in the county, myself and Rowena Van Meter. And Rowena services all five of the elementary schools. And I service both middle schools and both high school campuses. And I service both middle schools and both high school campuses. In Rowena's area, we have approximately one hundred and fifty students identified in the elementary area. In my area, at North Middle, I have a hundred and twenty-eight students. At South Middle, I have a hundred students. And at East and West Campus, I have two hundred and twenty-one students. So I have a total of four hundred and forty-nine kids in all four locations. Students are identified in the Gifted and Talented program in elementary schools. Our, our program actually extends from kindergarten to twelfth grade. Students coming in in kindergarten all the way up through third grade can be placed in what we call a primary talent pool, which means that somewhere along the way, those students in scoring, in map testing, or maybe some type of hands-on activity, or in some type of arts area showed potential above their peers at their age level. And it was approximately a potential, a grade level or two above at, you know, at the minimum. So they're placed on a, in a primary talent program where we watch those students and hope that we identify them in the Gifted and Talented program formally. That happens in fourth grade. All students are tested, so there's no exclusion. We even have twice exceptional students, which are students who are in the special needs area as well as Gifted and Talented. But in fourth grade, when all students are blanket tested, they have to show us a score on a nationally-normed test, which is not a classroom test or a K-Prep test, which is our state or something that's developed locally. It has to be a test that's nationally-normed, which means given nationally to all students at that age group. And they have to score in the top five percent, okay? Some ninety-five percentiles we'll take a look at. We definitely take a look at the ninety-six percentile and above. So definitely those in the top four percent at the time of the test are the ones that are taken a look at or put into our testing system. After that, we have to receive parental permission to continue testing. We give another nationally-normed test so that we have some validity. It could be a good day or maybe a, a different reason other than their knowledge that they scored well on that one test. So we have to have a, a different test to back up that score. And then we have to have a third piece of evidence. Most of the time, it's a recommendation from a teacher who has, you know, knowledge in that specific area. And that's for the academically identified students. Those students can be identified in general intellect, math, science, social studies, or language arts. Those are our five academic areas. Then we have non-academic areas. So we have students that are identified in creativity, leadership, dance, visual arts, music, and drama. And those are students that are identified through some type of teacher that has a specialty in that area, that teaches that specific subject area. Students that might perform in MCTI or Felix Martin in our plays. Students that may be taking dance lessons from Ms. Melanie Bogus in our, at our dance studio and she wants to recommend students. Even, even students that are in chorus and maybe go to some type of competition and in chorus and sing and, and make those achievements or earn those awards. Then they're placed into our program for Gifted and Talented. Once we have students in our program, we are charged to service those students. There is in Infinite Campus, which is our computer system that keys most of the data for our students. There is a section for Gifted and Talented and we have specific criteria that we have to check off that we've obtained to formally identify them in the program. And then we have specific areas that we have to check off that we are servicing students in those areas. Some things that I do at the middle school, high school level, for example, the academic students that are identified, I hold GT workshops every Friday for grade-level students. And at the workshops, they come to an area in the Alternative Learning Center that I have, which was the old welding workshop. And they stay with me all day long on Friday. And those students that are identified academically, we work on all four subject areas. We work on ACT prep. We work on PSAT and SAT test prep. We do experiments. We work on creativity and critical thinking and those types of things. And I formulate the day activity and what we, what we cover during those sessions. Because of the number of students that I have, they normally see me for four workshop sessions a year because I have grade level and by, by school that I bring the students down to those workshop areas. This year, because we went from six GT teachers down to two recently or during our, our last few years, we started with the academic students. We had to redo our, our entire program because we no longer had the, the resources that we needed to do what we had done in the past. So we took a, a strong look at the academically identified students and tried to get things developed for those academic students. Now, we're moving on out into those arts areas and things that we need to get on board with. So the Felix Martin program, I wrote two grants this past, this last school year. And over the summer, I received a grant called the Full Steam Ahead Project. And in that Full Steam Ahead Project, I ordered robotics kits to work with students on STEAM now. It went from STEM to STEAM because we implementing the arts in that acronym. So we're going to have competitions in beta. The, the beta competitions are now moving on to the robotics area. So we have robotics kits and I'm working with my students on those workshop days with those robotics kits programming and doing things like that. So they, they granted us four thousand one hundred and sixty dollars for the Full Steam Ahead Project. And then I also wrote a grant for a, a project that I'm calling the Class Grant. There is a, a book by J. Stephen Carey and it's called Leadership and Soft Skills for High School and College Students to Be Successful. And it blends those leadership skills with those soft skills, which is of course what we try to emphasize in those academic areas so that they will be successful on the job. And some of those testing areas and COSA and things like Work Keys Test that the high school students have to take. And those are for my leadership kids. I'm meeting with my leadership kids the last Monday of six months in the school year. And we are doing that book study and then we're implementing some of those within the school and going to extend it out to some businesses and some things in the community during February, which is the National Job Shadow Month. We're going to take a look at going out into businesses and having those students watch and see those leadership skills displayed and come back and take a look at what we've seen and kind of give talk-out sessions to the rest of the students in their grade level. We have quite a few students and very few teachers, so we're doing the best that we can. I know that there are things that we could probably do a lot better. But Penny has worked with us to focus in specific areas and we're getting, we're getting better at getting acclimated to just two people and so many students. So I think we're doing the best that we can. But that's just kind of a, a small snapshot version of Gifted and Talented. Students don't test into the program when we blanket test in the elementary areas. They can be identified every year or at any time thereafter. It's my job to take a look at map scores, ACT scores, PSAT scores. Anytime students take bulk tests like that and see how those nationally-normed scores, see what they look like and if they're in that ninety-six percentile or above. And then if I find one that I need to go ahead and identify mid-year or after that elementary process, then I identify students as well.
So there are some students who are in Gifted, Talented, and Leadership Program?
Yes. Yes.
Once they're in the program or they're in it, or they have to test each year to stay in it?
Once they're in, they're in. The only thing that they can do is if they wish not to participate, we have them to decline services. So they're still really identified Gifted and Talented, but if they don't want to participate in what we're doing, then they can decline services. Any other questions?
Have you ever been approached about having other teachers to help you? Like expand, went from six to two? I mean, why not three? You know, I mean, like what, what would your needs be if you had to add somebody? Have you been?
Oh, absolutely.
Have you thought, uh-huh?
Oh, yeah.
On the middle school, high school level or elementary?
Oh, yes.
A little of those. You see what I'm saying? If you go from six down to two.
It's, it's been hard. And, and classroom teachers, you know, they help facilitate service students as well. But it's hard to keep, you know, you know, it's like four hundred and forty-nine kids and one man in four locations. I can't keep on top of everything. So, yeah, we, I work with counselors, I work with other people in the building, they help me out, definitely.
Sure.
If you have a couple ideas, just bring it over.
Do what?
And see what we can do.
Oh, yeah. I'd be glad. I'd be glad to give you some.
Before we leave.
I think that should be one at the high school permanently. There are plenty of high school students. Exactly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Just a, just a couple of other things, you know, I'll go into a lot more on Thursday night, but obviously the, the pension reform thing, that's on everyone's mind and we have a meeting next Monday night, you know, Felix Martin for District Employees and Retirees. And representatives, and our state representative and state senator will be there. There's a link online now on our website and, is it on our website or just through the email? Through the email that we've sent out where they can submit questions and we'll get those to them ahead of time so they can try to answer those questions. Now, interestingly, I've heard today that maybe the bill, the legislation we've been waiting on to see what they're going to propose, we think that may come down Wednesday. So some of the questions could change in that time, but the questions they have now could be answered and have a new set of questions. So hopefully this will be a helpful thing and we're just trying to get the information out to the folks so they can make good decisions and, and just try to keep everyone in the loop as best we can. And we're all scrambling just a little bit on that, but I think we'll have some answers soon, at least of what, what they're thinking. And then we'll go from there. That's about all I have now. I do want to mention, Ms. Bump's can help me with this. I think we need to wish luck, good luck tonight. I think we have three teams in regional tournaments, is that correct?
We have two teams in regional and one team in district.
One district. So volleyball's district and, and girls and boys soccer both in the region tonight, is that correct? So good luck to them. And, and that's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Next we have personnel actions. If there's any questions. Melody's here. And if not, we'll move on to attendance enrollment. Are we still waiting on the attendance report?
Yes.
That's what I thought.
Yes, we're, we should, I should get that. I have, I have a copy, but we're trying to make sure it's totally accurate before I send that to you. So I'm just going to, I'm talking to Sherri. Should be able to send that to her tomorrow and she'll get that.
Thank you. And then we have the schematic design, we have the presentation by Mr. Thomas and board consent agenda. Any questions on the legal process, lease use agreement, memories, or field trips? All right, well, if not, I need a motion to adjourn. A motion by Mr. Joe Horowitz to adjourn. By Ms. Williams, all in favor of adjournment, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Aye.